Good evening. Thank you for attending the Oh yeah, it is on. Thank you for attending the November 24th, 2025 meeting of the Westerville Schools Board of Education. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. Printed agendas are on the table for, in the back of the room for our guests. Or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link, select Board of Education, and follow the board docs link to our current meeting agenda. There will be one opportunity to address the board this evening in Agenda Item 5.01. There's a sign up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mr. Hackelman?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Leeban?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Next up is District Highlights and Recognitions, and this is the most exciting part of the night. Our 2025 Fall A-plus Awards. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Ms. Valentine and Ms. Leeban.
Good evening, everybody. Make that a little taller. So we're here to present the A-plus Awards this evening. These are presented a couple of times each school year, in the fall and in the spring, to employees who distinguish themselves through a single or ongoing demonstration of exemplary performance. The selection committee's decision is guided by evaluating how each nominee's action support the district's mission, their willingness to go above and beyond normal expectations, and how their behavior is consistent with one or more of the district's values. We're honored tonight to recognize all of the 2025 Fall A-plus Award winners. Alright, so first up, it is Walnut Springs Middle School Principal, Dr. Michelle Martin, who unfortunately was unable to attend, but we are still going to recognize her anyway. Dr. Martin was nominated by two parents, who both shared that she is an exceptional educator and leader who consistently goes above and beyond to support her students. She's a constant presence at school events, performances, athletic competitions, meetings, and ceremonies. She remains available long after the school day ends and always makes students and families feel welcomed and valued. Whether guiding students academically, supporting them emotionally, or holding them accountable with compassion, Dr. Martin embodies every district value: respect, inclusiveness, communication, collaboration, community, trust, and accountability. One parent wrote, quote, "She played a vital role in helping our daughter navigate the challenges of transitioning to middle school, creating a personalized plan to ensure she felt safe, supported, and encouraged. She checks in regularly, reads the same books as her, and even attends her track meets to cheer her on, celebrating successes and offering pep talks when needed," end quote. The other parent shared, quote, "We have watched our daughter grow into a confident eighth grader under her leadership, and we are profoundly grateful. Westerville is extremely fortunate to have Dr. Martin, whose dedication, presence, and unwavering care make her fully deserving of this A-plus award," end quote. Congratulations to Walnut Springs Principal, Dr. Michelle Martin.
Next up, please help me welcome Faust Elementary School Art Teacher Heather Fredo. Ms. Ms. Fredo. Come on down. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Fredo was nominated by a parent who shared that she is a dedicated art teacher, a reassuring presence for families at Faust Elementary, and one of the kindest individuals she has ever met. She introduces students to all areas of art, ranging from painting and drawing to more intricate paper collages and lessons on art history. She encourages students who struggle, celebrates their efforts, and praises their willingness to try something new. One parent wrote, "Every morning when I drop my daughter off at school, Ms. Fredo is waiting outside in the car line greeting students, giving hugs and high fives, and welcoming everyone with a smile. Not a single student walks past her without stopping to say good morning. As a parent, it warms my heart knowing that there are teachers in the building who are invested in not only my daughter's academic success, but also her mental success." So congratulations to Faust Elementary Art Teacher, Ms. Heather Fredo.
Next up, please welcome Minerva Park Middle School Attendance Secretary, Michaela Leonard. Congratulations. Nominated by a coworker, Ms. Leonard deserves to be recognized for the constant warmth, care, and patience she shows to every person who walks through the doors at Minerva Park. In addition to the daunting daily responsibility of tracking 760 students, ensuring they are accounted for, checking in when someone is absent, and alerting the counseling team when concerns arise, she goes above and beyond throughout the entire building. Excuse me. Ms. Leonard also spends her evenings assisting at home sporting events, serving as the welcoming face who greets families, collects tickets, and helps with concessions. One colleague shared, quote, "Ms. Leonard is not only a joy to be around, she is the loving, calm, hardworking presence every building would only dream of having. She brings drive, calm, love, and care, and she helps make all Panthers better by just being a part of our home," end quote. Congratulations to Minerva Park Middle School Attendance Secretary, Michaela Leonard.
Alrighty, next is Genoa Middle School Teacher Matthew Phillips, who is also unable to be us, be with us this evening, excuse me, but we will absolutely recognize him. Nominated by a coworker, Mr. Phillips serves as a behavior intervention specialist at the middle school level, and his impact on students is nothing short of extraordinary. Mr. Phillips has a rare gift for seeing and supporting students whom others may find the most challenging. He never stops advocating for them, consistently reminding colleagues that every behavior was, has meaning. Whether he's singing a silly song to break down walls or creating a safe space for students to share their deepest feelings, his approach builds trust and stability, teaching students not only how to navigate school, but how to navigate life. One colleague shared, quote, "Matt's work is not easy, but he approaches it with patience, joy, and a belief in the potential of every student. He is a constant reminder that relationships and respect are at the heart of education," end quote.
Next, we want to welcome Hanby Elementary School Teacher, Tenley Arrington. Congratulations. Also nominated by a coworker, Ms. Arrington embodies the qualities of an outstanding educator through her skill, compassion, and unwavering dedication to student success. She has a true gift for intervention and differentiated learning. Ms. Arrington meets students exactly where they are, recognizing their strengths, understanding their challenges, and tailoring instruction so every child can thrive. Beyond her instructional expertise, she creates a strong sense of belonging in her classroom, giving students the confidence to take risks, make mistakes, and grow. Her students know she sees them not just for their academic abilities, but as whole individuals who matter. One colleague shared, quote, "Ms. Arrington's commitment to excellence, her passion for teaching, and her deep care for children make her the kind of educator every student deserves. She is truly an A-plus educator in every sense of the word," end quote. Congratulations to Hanby Elementary School Teacher, Tenley Arrington.
Next, please help me welcome, excuse me, Hanby Elementary School Teacher Donna Schroitz. Nominated. Congratulations. Nominated by a parent, Ms. Schroitz is described as having an incredible heart and a deep commitment to including and caring for all students. She creates spaces where children learn the importance of community care and understand that anyone, no matter who they are, can make a difference. This school year, she put those values into action during a unit on what it means to have a great heart, partnering with 4th grade students and teachers at Hanby. She helped create Jackson's Pond, a project honoring Jackson Preston, who passed away from brain cancer before he could attend school. Through this work, students learned how they could positively impact their community by raising funds for Angel Works, and the cure starts now. One parent shared, quote, "Ms. Schroitz is constantly living her values and uplifting the lives of those around her. If there's anyone deserving of this award, it's definitely her." Congratulations again to Hanby Elementary School Teacher, Donna Schroitz.
Next, please welcome Mark Twain Elementary School Teacher, Angie Lee. Nominated by a parent, Ms. Lee is praised for her belief that strong relationships with students and families are the foundation of meaningful learning, and this is truly her superpower. She takes time to know each child personally, checking in regularly, building on their strengths, and challenging them to grow. One parent shared, quote, "Our daughter is not outspoken or overly confident. However, she was empowered by Ms. Lee to run for class president. She practiced her speech over and over, stood up there confidently, and she was voted class president. Without Ms. Lee's encouragement, she never would have worked that hard or believed in herself enough to try," end quote. Ms. Lee builds a remarkable sense of community, both inside her classroom and throughout the school. She greets students in the hall by name, and by the time they reach 4th grade, they are excited to have her as a teacher. She also extends her care beyond the school year, volunteering each summer with the big bus to support English language learners, creating a familiar and trusted presence for families. Congratulations to Mark Twain Elementary School Teacher, Angie Lee.
Next, please help me welcome Huber Ridge Elementary School Teacher, Della Potts. Nominated by a teacher, excuse me, nominated by a parent, Ms. Potts has served as their son's intervention specialist at Huber Ridge Elementary for the past three years, and she has been nothing short of remarkable. Her patience, compassion, and unwavering dedication make her a true saint when working with students who face behavioral and emotional challenges. One parent shared, "We first met Ms. Potts in the middle of a school year, a time when change can be difficult. Our son struggles with transitions, but it didn't take long for us to realize that Ms. Potts was exactly the teacher he needed. She communicates with us regularly, sharing not just challenges, but also the many successes along the way. She genuinely cares for her students, always offering encouragement, support, and love. Ms. Potts has helped prepare their son for 6th grade, and the family credits so much of his growth and success to her guidance and care. Congratulations again to Huber Ridge Elementary School Teacher, Della Potts."
Next, please welcome McVeigh Elementary School Counselor, Andrea Wiseman. Nominated by a coworker, Ms. Wiseman consistently demonstrates a deep commitment to supporting students and families beyond her daily responsibilities. Recently, she worked closely with a family experiencing significant housing transitions, ensuring they were connected with community resources and that their child could continue attending school regularly and successfully. One colleague shared, quote, "As the family's circumstances evolved day by day, Ms. Wiseman remained a steady and compassionate presence, proactively checking in, adapting supports, and maintaining open communication. She went beyond school-based efforts for researching and connecting the family with additional community supports, truly reflecting the district's values of nurturing, collaboration, and inclusiveness," end quote. Congratulations to McVeigh Elementary School Counselor, Andrea Wiseman.
And last but not least, please welcome North High School Intervention Specialist, Matt Petrofetrow. Congratulations. Nominated by a coworker, Mr. Fetrow goes above and beyond to support students through his teamwork, flexibility, and inventive thinking. When a colleague reached out asking if he had access to a 3D printer to create a custom iPad key guard for a student with communication and fine motor challenges, Mr. Fetrow immediately stepped up to help. One staff member shared, quote, "Not only did he offer to print two different versions of the key guard, but he also collaborated closely with me to refine the design to meet the student's specific motor needs. His willingness to innovate and problem solve will directly impact the student's ability to communicate independently using the Lamp Assist Technology App. His creative use of district resources also saved approximately, get this, $150 to $200 per key guard, funds that could now be redirected to support other students with similar needs. So thank you, and congratulations to North High School Teacher, Matt Fetrow." Well, congratulations to all of you. I'm sure Charlie wants you to go outside so she can take pictures of you now, too. But thank you so much for all that you do for our schools and our kids. I know you usually have better stuff than I do. I love you so much.
Alright. Um, next up, we have reports and we have our superintendent's comments, Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you. I'm feeling a little, you know, hi, everyone. Significantly cleared out there after the wonderful turnout that we had for our A-plus Award winners. Would like to congratulate all of them for their hard work, appreciate the turnout tonight. I would also like to congratulate our newly elected board members. I know our newest board member who will be sworn in in January, Tatiana Brown, is here tonight. And also, congratulations to Anissa and Chrissy for being reelected. I'm excited to continue to work with you, and Tatiana, we're excited for you to join our team as well. I would like to take just a moment to thank our community for the passage of the earned income tax. Want to share that we will continue to work hard to stretch those dollars and will continue to advocate with our legislators for fair and appropriate state funding so that we can hopefully not have to come back to our community anytime soon. There's a lot going on legislatively, and Nicole will be sharing a little bit more about that. But we know that we are definitely in a challenging time when it comes to taxes, and that makes it even more meaningful that we are able to pass this issue. So again, a big thank you to our community. I would also like to thank the many community volunteers who helped to educate our community on the ballot issue. A special thank you to Emma Nelson and Kevin Hoffman, who co-chaired the campaign committee. So during an election, a lot of people don't realize this, the district's not permitted to run a campaign. We can only provide information. And so we're certainly grateful for the many community members who were very engaged in this ballot issue, who stepped up and helped us in those efforts. So, big thank you to all those folks. We are certainly grateful and appreciative. I know in the last few weeks, I've talked to a lot of staff members whose jobs were, you know, potentially at risk for being reduced if that didn't pass. Even one tonight who said, you know, "I'm just still, just so relieved." I've talked to a lot of parents who are also extremely grateful that their children will not have to lose valuable programs and services. So, can't say enough how grateful we all are, and again, our commitment to making sure that we use these dollars wisely and continue to stretch them as much as we possibly can for our kids. Other than that, I'm just kind of enjoying post-election getting out to some classrooms. I'm wearing my Squid Squad shirt today. Got to go to squid dissection in 3rd grade at McVeigh today and over at Hanby on Friday. And, you know, just being able to be in the classroom and see the excitement of the kids. I would tell you, like, I don't know if I could have done that as a 3rd grader, but they are into it. And so watching that hands-on learning is super exciting. And just wanted to take a moment to thank, you know, I know this happens every day in our schools, but the many parents who showed up for that activity at both buildings and helped because you could never do a dissection of squid with a room full of 3rd graders without lots of parental help. And so, big thank you to our parents who continue to show up and support in many ways, including dissecting squid. So, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much, Ms. Hamburg. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Moving along to 4.02, we have a legislative update from our treasurer, Ms. Marshall. Yes, thank you, President Meyer, and members of the board. So, there was a lot going on this month in, with the 136th General Assembly in this great state. Are you able to pull that up as a slideshow, Jennifer? Is that just the PDF? You'll probably have to pull it up in Google Slides. No, there's no transitions. I just, I don't know. I just thought it should be a slideshow. Kyle, edit this part out when you saw my legislative update, please. Okay, so today is November the 24th. Both Houses, so the House and the Senate, had their final sessions before break last week, and lots of things happened very quickly in those sessions. They had lots of hearings, and they pushed through some pretty significant legislation. We go the next slide, Jennifer. Oh wait, I have the thing. Sorry. That's my fault. Okay. So, property tax reform. I have that in quotes, reform, because there's varying ideas about whether this is actually a meaningful reform that will really make a difference for what the state needs. Our property tax system is broken. The legislature has admitted themselves, President, Senate President Rob McCauley has shared many times that the state has done a really good job of messing up property taxes over the last couple of decades. And so, there's been a variety of bills. There's still many, many more besides these that have moved through the legislative process. A lot of this was actually part of the state's budget bill, the most recent Bynum budget bill, and where most of those provisions were vetoed by the governor. So, what we have in front of the governor's desk today for consideration, so these have passed both the Senate and the House. House Bill 129, it adds fixed some levy types to the 20 mil floor calculation. Just a reminder, we are not a district that's on the 20 mil floor. All of our voted levies are subject to those reduction factors due to House Bill 920. So this does not apply to our school district or our community. It also caps revenue growth to inflate, for, to the inflation amounts for 20 mil floor school districts and adjusts credits, the House Bill 186 does. So this is a little bit complicated, but what they're looking at is for those districts that are at that 20 mil floor, when they come in for a reappraisal or an update, that growth will be capped at whatever the last three years of inflation was for that reevaluate, reevaluation or the update. In addition to that, they also added, they're changing the way the rollback credits work. So, every non-business property right now has a 10% rollback on all voted levies from 2013 and prior. And then, any owner occupants, occupied property, so residential where you live, gets an additional 2.5% owner occupancy credit. There was amendment added at the very last minute, which I haven't been able to work out all of the details to just yet and quite understand how the math works. But what they're saying, what they said in the committee hearings was that amendment will adjust down that 10% non-business credit over a five-year period, or no, over a four-year period. It will phase it out over four years, and it will increase the owner occupancy credit up to 15.3% over the same period of time. So right now, the owner occupancy plus the rollback, you're getting 12.5%. So that would increase to 15.3%. But they're also phasing out all of the 10% non-business credit. So all of that, those credits are reimbursed to the school district by the state. They said in hearing that this would not affect local governments' revenue and that this is just a shift in how the state is reimbursing some of those credits. I do think ultimately, the folks with the non-business rollback, if it's not their, if it's not where they live, they are going to see a tax increase as a result of these credits, that credit shift. So, it's very complicated.
Could you also talk about, this is the one that would impact people who live in a 20 mil floor district in terms of retroactively? Because I don't want our residents to be confused. Could you maybe touch on that a little bit?
Yes, so this, the House Bill 80, 186 specifically, goes back to Tax Year 23, which is a retroactive. And some property taxpayers will see a credit, as in, credit in their next bill for those previous amounts. Because we're not a 20 mil floor district, this will not apply to our community. And there's, there's about a little over 400 school districts that are at that 20 mil floor that will be impacted by this, but we are not that district. And the state is taking some money out of the sales tax credit fund, and they're making some, making up some of that revenue loss to those entities, those school districts. The other piece, too, is that will continue throughout in the future with those 20 mil floor districts as well.
Ms. Marshall, could you just?
Yeah, I know.
Explain quickly the 20 mil floor.
Yes.
It's confusing.
So, in Ohio, as, as I've said many, many times, for all voted levies, as values increase, tax rates decrease. Except for for school districts, tax rates, we're required to collect 20 mils of local property taxes in order to receive state funding. And so, our tax rates will decrease as values increase, but not below that 20 mils because we're required to collect 20 mils. That includes that inside millage, which is non-voted, set by the state constitution back in 18, whenever. And then, so for any school district that's at that 20 mil floor, if values go up by 30%, their tax revenue does go up by 30%. So that's, but we are still subject to those, so we're not at that 20 mil floor. So the idea behind this is that it's capping that growth. And I think most people gen, generally agree that that is something that is responsible to do and something to look at, all of that. However, just to remind everybody, our state share is based and updated on how much our values, our property values increase. And so, it's decreasing their state share at the same time, but they're not seeing that revenue, just like we don't see the revenue now because we're subject to House Bill 920. It's artificially inflating what they're getting at the local level, according to the state funding formula. So the state, I mean, they know that. We, I mean, we've been complaining about it for years as House Bill 920 districts. They call it phantom revenue. But that is something that they'll, just, I don't, they just need to look at a lot of things. But this is, this is their attempt. So I, I do want to remind everybody that there is a statewide push to abolish property taxes in Ohio. And so, there is a group that is going around collecting signatures, trying to get a constitutional amendment that would prohibit any taxation on property in the state. And so, I think our lawmakers are really concerned about that getting on the ballot and whether that would, would or wouldn't pass. And so, they are doing all of this to try to help stave off that ballot issue, in my opinion. And so, I think it's just the way that they're going about some of this stuff just doesn't make practical sense. And there is a lot of, there was a lot of testimony. So Mike Sobel used to work for the Department of Taxation. He shared in committee, you know, for school districts specifically, a lot of us cross counties, some as many as six counties, which I didn't know that. um, some as many as six counties, which I didn't know that. And not every county is on the same reappraisal and update schedule. So you will be having, um, one county that will be adjusting that tax revenue, that rate to not collect as much based on inflation. And then maybe you don't have the next county over being appraised for another year or two. And then they're adjusting that, but that's going to be a different retro look for inflationary number. So that'll be a different rate. Um, and we have in our state constitution, uniformity with taxation with our property taxes. So there's a lot of questions about whether this meets that constitutional requirement. Uh, the other piece too is it's tied to the property. And so he made the, he gave the example that, so in Franklin County, if I have a $300,000 home and just making up numbers, let's say, um, I have a reevaluation and values are updated and I now do a $500 reduction from what the actual tax is because of inflation cap or whatever. That, and then Fairfield County is on a different update cycle. So they're not going to see that same, that $300,000 home is going to be paying more taxes than the $300,000 home in Franklin County. But then if somebody builds a new $300,000 home in Franklin County, they're going to be paying that full amount. And so it's, there's a lot of, um, it creates a lot of unevenness with the tax. And I can't even imagine, well, I can't imagine because they all went down and testified, what our county treasurers and county auditors and just the administrative nightmare that this is going to cause. Um, there was literally some, a county treasurer that, um, went down and testified that there's no, like, it's not physically possible for them to update tax bills and that like their software won't let them, uh, they don't have the ability to do that by the first tax bill. And they said that the soonest they would be able to do that would probably be the second tax bill, the second half. Um, and then they were concerned about like all of the confusion as some people have their taxes escrowed and then all of this adjusting, are we adjusting up? Are we adjusting down? And all of these things. So this was, um, just everything taken as a whole also.
That's a special, that was my question. Is this all supposed to be effective January 1? Uh, all these bills, uh, effective January 1?
Yeah, so the goal was to get it in place.
And then, so you're talking about like how this impacts, taxes are paid six months in arrears, right? And, you know, people trying to get credits back or being subject to the new bills and, and that's would be a, I can just imagine.
Yeah, so I think it's going to be extremely confusing and complicated for people to understand. But my biggest concern, I think, is because I've seen, you know, the social media posts about the biggest tax relief and all these things and $2 billion. Well, that $2 billion is future growth that they're talking about. So it's not a $2 billion savings to taxpayers today. And it doesn't apply uniformly across the state. And so, um, that's my biggest concern is that people don't understand. Most people don't understand property taxes at all or what, uh, 20 mil floor, House Bill 920, or that there's even different tax, that we're separate from the city. You know what I mean? Like, there's so much that goes into it that I think just the, the regular person off the street doesn't understand most of this. And if they're looking at their tax bill and expecting something because of something that they saw on social media, I think that's going to be problematic. So that's 186. And then House Bill 335, um, is essentially the same thing, but it is applied to that inside millage. So I've done many presentations on House Bill 920 and how that affects, um, our overall revenue growth from property taxes. Uh, that inside millage was set by the state constitution. It's 10 mils shared among, um, overlapping jurisdictions. So our portion of that 10 mils here in Westerville is 3.8 mils. And we collect, uh, so our overall tax rate is about 38 mils. So we collect 3.8 mils. That never changes. So if, um, that portion goes up by 30% in values, that portion goes up. It's really about a 3% increase though, overall for our overall property tax revenue. And so this would also cap that to inflation, um, based on the last three years. And again, we'd have the same sorts of things with, depending on what county you're in, you might see different rates. And you'll hear me a lot talk about everyone in Westerville schools pays the same tax rate. Uh, I may not be able to say that anymore after this, depending on how those calculations work out.
Has there been any preliminary calculations about capping for us here in Westerville, our inside millage and to tie it to inflation and what that would result in, uh, plus or minus?
Um, so I, that is not a retroactive piece. That is a future piece. So I haven't done any calculations with that at this point. Um, I have a small, like, based on our estimates for the projections, I have a small percentage increase. I mean, I didn't put 30% increases in there because I knew there was a lot of stuff going around with this conversation. So, um, yeah, I don't have that dollar figure off the top of my head, but I, I did. I mean, this past, uh, reappraisal that we had in 2023, we saw like less than 3% increase overall in our property tax revenue as a result of 40% increases in values. And so I would say, I don't know.
And that was, that was significantly less than inflation.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah. But I think they're looking at the individual 3.8 mils. So I do think that that would have dropped down to maybe a few hundred thousand dollars versus like the two, I think it was about 2 million we got overall. And then we saw all the border revisions that are also reducing that further, so. And then how, so that's House Bill 335. I think the one that I'm most concerned about honestly is this House Bill 309. Uh, I think this is a direct attack on our local school boards. This gives the county budget commission and our voters, uh, this gives county budget commissions, um, the authority, uh, the implicit authority to override voted levies. Um, there is a, um, like a safety guard for, uh, new levies within the first five years. But any of the older levies, um, they can, if they determine they're excessive, or not needed in any way, uh, they would have the authority to reduce the tax rates and reduce the revenue collected on those.
Property tax levies or does that what it include earned income tax?
Uh, this would be property tax.
Okay.
But I should mention, um, they look at all of our revenue sources for determining the level of funding that we need, so.
And it's my understanding they haven't, they haven't put criteria behind what is excessive yet.
No, no, they did not. So, um, it is really important, and we do this, uh, but it's really important that we are having board adopted plans so that we can make it very clear to the budget commission, should we need to go in front of them to explain, you know, these are our board adopted plans for all the things that we have. We don't, we don't budget like from one year to the next. We have projections because we have long-term contracts and all of the things that we have, all of the requirements under law that we have to satisfy with that. And so it's a little bit different with how counties budget. They sort of just look at one year or the next. And so it's just, I think it's just about having that conversation. But my biggest concern about this one honestly is that it's, um, being decided by only one, one county that represents our school district. So we span both Franklin and Delaware County. And so our budget commission is tied to our most populous county, which is Franklin County. But we still have a pretty significant population in Delaware County. And, um, Delaware County does not have, residents do not have any representation on that Franklin County budget commission. Um, not, you know, not anything against Franklin County and their budget commission or anything like that. But you may have, uh, someone who's elected to, like, our county auditor doesn't live in our school district, right? But he's one of the representative, representatives on the county auditor's, um, budget commission. And so I, I just think that it's, we have a locally elected school board. Uh, you all have the authority to direct us to roll back or, um, whatever, adjust our budgets and whatever we need to do if there were excessive collections. Um, I think that it's, um, just very short-sighted for legislators to think that our local elected school boards aren't equipped to be able to have this conversation and that they're trying to turn it over to where we have to defend our voted levies that our community voted for and passed, um, to representatives that don't, uh, represent them, to elected officials that don't represent all of our community. So it's, I don't know.
Is there any talk about, um, if this particular one were to get passed, that there would be a, like a lawsuit or anything? Because it seems like this could be unconstitutional because the voters are approving something for an amount of time. And then we're just giving somebody else the authority to say, no, thanks.
Yeah, so I think, um, I've heard that there's a legal argument for just about every one of these provisions. It's just a matter of it them being challenged. And I do expect that if they get signed into law, they will be challenged.
Yeah.
Who's authoring and co-authoring 309?
Who's authoring?
Yeah.
Uh, the majority of these were brought forward by, um, Dave Thomas out of Ash Tabeula. Um, he's a former county auditor in Ash Tabeula and he's been on a state rep for, I don't know if this is his first term, maybe. And then, uh, House Bill 124 is also on the governor's desk and it modifies property tax sales assessment ratio studies. So, uh, right now, the process is every county goes through their reappraisals. Again, they're on different cycles depending on the year. And then the State Department of Taxation oversees to make sure that their value changes are reasonable and that they make sense, again, because we're worried about uniformity across the state. So this basically, um, switches it to where, uh, the counties have the say on what those values look like. And then the state, uh, Board of Taxpills would have to like appeal those values. So essentially, I think it's important to understand we have 88 different counties in the state of Ohio. And we already have some, uh, discrepancies between how different counties interpret the law in different ways. Uh, I think this is just going to foster something that looks like 88 counties doing 88 different things across the state. And that's really problematic for jurisdictions that overlap different counties, so. So that's what that is. And so I, I'm sorry to do this to you, but I think it's really important that people see this video. So this is Senator Bill Blessing. He's out of Cincinnati. He's, uh, the only Republican that voted no on the state's most recent budget. Um, he also voted no on some of these bills in the Senate. Um, this is nearly 10 minutes. I apologize, but, um, I do think it's important that we watch this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, not going to stand in opposition to this per se. Uh, I just want to offer a little bit of a different approach with respect to philosophy. Uh, but before getting into that, uh, I want to acknowledge how hard Chairwoman Sandy O'Brien has worked in this space. Property taxation is one of the most complicated policy areas in Ohio. It is a Byzantine network of state laws, constitutional provisions, court cases that also happen to be directly influenced by two other very complicated areas, one of which is housing, which Senator Reynolds is deeply familiar with, and school funding of which Senator Brenner is deeply familiar with. You can disagree with the policy, uh, policy outcomes all you want, but what is not up for debate is her work ethic, courage and perseverance. I respect her deeply for that, as well as representatives who have worked on this the most, Representatives Thomas and Romer. This is also true of the staff and folks at LSC, who are probably ready for this to be done so they can grab a well-deserved drink and think about anything other than property taxation. I get the sense that everyone is tired, wants to move on and talk about anything other than property taxes. After all, it has dominated the discussion for at least two years now. Unfortunately, I don't think this is the end, but the end of the beginning of the property tax fight. These are clever bills, but let's take a step back and look at what they're implicitly saying. Ohioans want property tax relief. It was the valuation increases from the triennial appraisals that increased property taxes, especially for floor districts, though inside millage also had a significant impact. This led to a revenue windfall for local governments, especially school districts. Therefore, we are going to legislate in such a way as to claw back these increases as they were not voted on and limit future increases on the 20 mil floor and inside millage alike. This will solve the problem. I don't believe that this will solve the problem. Implicit in this is that school districts, for example, are flush with cash and do not need the money. Have we examined if this is objectively true? I'll give you some reasons that I don't think that it is. Ohio has had high property taxes for some time. According to LSC using FY 2023 numbers, Ohio ranks 15th in per pupil public elementary and secondary school local revenue. Only Pennsylvania is higher when looking at our surrounding states. However, we rank 37th in per pupil public elementary and secondary school state revenue. We're behind all of our surrounding states, so much so that if we had done the entirety of the fair school funding plan in FY 23, we'd still be the worst of our surrounding states, slightly below West Virginia. Interestingly enough, when you add up state, local and federal dollars, we're right in the middle at 25th amongst the states. Given that public education is the largest state-only share of the state budget, as well as the largest share of local property taxes, it stands to reason that if state support is lagging, it will be made up elsewhere. Since federal funds are such a small share, the burden falls increasingly on local property taxes. We Republicans pride ourselves as fiscal conservatives, staunch defenders of every taxpayer dollar. Have we taken the time to look at our local school boards? Though they are nonpartisan, I'm willing to bet the vast majority of school boards in this state are Republican-dominated, even after the results of the election this past month, or during this month, I should say. We have 607 school districts in Ohio. The urban eight school districts are heavily represented by Democrats, likely representing a quarter of the state's population or more. But what of the other districts? Given that Republicans dominate county offices to the tune of 80 to 90%, it would be entirely believable if Republicans held at least two-thirds of the school board seats in this state. Is it really true that Republicans are fiscally conservative at the state level, but not at the local level? I don't buy that. I think the most likely answer is that school boards are better with money than they're given credit for. What about high cash reserves? How does one justify cash reserves over 100%? And there are school districts that do have cash reserves over 100%. From my perspective, quite easily, and the rash, and the behavior is quite rational. As mentioned earlier, state support of public education is lacking compared to the rest of the country. Federal revenues are a drop in the bucket, though that's not unusual. So local revenues have to make up the difference. Unfortunately, it's not so easy. Since everything outside of inside millage in the 20 mil floor must be voted on and our constitution applies tax reduction factors, schools have to go to the ballot to raise needed revenue. But voters can and do shoot levies down. It is this uncertainty in revenue that drives school districts to keep larger cash reserves. This allows them to weather a failed levy cycle or two while dealing with the same rising costs that all of us deal with. I could go on, but you get the picture. I believe the net effect of what we are doing today will be the following. First, we're going to see an increase in the number of levies over the coming years, accelerating as cash reserves are spent down in any state-level temporary support like the expanded sax, sales tax holiday money dries up. Second, we'll see more districts in fiscal watch and fiscal emergency. When it becomes harder to raise local revenue, this is a likely result. There is also a threat at the federal level to cut Title I funding, which would put more pressure on some school districts, though not all. Third, local governments and school districts will direct their ire at the state when they go to the ballot. Fourth, bond ratings for local governments and school districts will go down. Fifth, services will almost certainly be cut if levies fail to pass. Sixth, what happened to simplicity? This definitely complicates the property tax situation. And lastly, and finally, this didn't work in the late 70s and early 80s when House Bill 920 was enacted and the tax reduction factors were put in the constitution. That was to avoid unvoted tax increases then, and we're doing something similar now. In the following decades, we simply voted on more levies. Why would we expect a different outcome today? If all this is correct, what does a long-term fix look like? I really think it's as simple as boosting state-level school funding. Nobody likes to go to the ballot to ask for new money. So I think it's more likely than not, the school districts would choose renewal levies for the foreseeable future if we did this. They'd also go to the ballot less often. That's because they could more fully count on state dollars. And their constituents would rightly ask why new money is needed when the state started pitching in closer to their fair share. Over time, the state and local funding split would reach a healthier ratio. As for the local side, I would encourage folks to look at land value taxation. I know I sound like a broken record. It's probably the 10th time I've mentioned it today. It's currently constitutionally prohibited, but I'm looking to change that with SJR 7. We need more housing, but added supply helps our local governments and schools as well from a revenue perspective. This grows the pie and spreads the tax burden amongst. This grows the pie and spreads the tax burden amongst more people. Unfortunately, property taxation has the perverse side effect of discouraging more housing. Land value taxes, however, encourage more housing as well as density. I think it's eminently reasonable to conclude that property tax rates would go down. As tax revenue in the aggregate goes up. While local governments and school districts phase in land value taxes and phase down property taxes. Allowing local governments and school districts to directly vote on the rate of taxation. Would increase bond ratings, lower cash reserves, stop the levy cycle and produce better governance overall. After all, this is how the General Assembly operates today. Ditto for local governments and school districts in Pennsylvania and Kentucky. Why is this good for the goose, but not for the gander? So at the end of this, you know, I understand that school districts and local governments are going to be upset. I would urge the local governments and schools to take stock of what's going on. And rather than be angry, pivot to longer term structural fixes. And next year's budget, you will have to work with the General Assembly whether you like it or not, irrespective of how you feel about the reforms today. But what a lot of what we're doing today is short term. A lot of what we're going to need to be doing is long term. And I hope that we will all work together on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
So Stephen Dyer is a former state representative, attorney and policy expert. On school funding and other things in Ohio. He put this blog post together recently. He has a blog that he keeps. And it's actually linked. If you click on the small picture up there, it'll take you to his blog post. But he put this slide together to adjust for inflation, K twelve's state budget spend. Adjust for inflation from nineteen seventy five to twenty twenty five. And concluded that we are at our lowest point since nineteen ninety seven on a per pupil. Spend and you can see. The when the Ed choice started and Ed choice expansion so that. Red line is the public school spent student spend. And then the total K twelve state budget spend is the blue line and how that breaks apart there on. With that Ed choice expansion.
They like to say they're making record investments in education, but again, it's important to note that that's not just public schools and that the increase is not ours.
Just a reminder of who our state leaders are. So Governor Dwyane, all of those bills are on his desk. Today, I plan to send a note and ask him to veto House Bill three oh nine specifically. And then our House Speaker, Matt Huffman and Rob McCauley. So I will say while. Dave Thomas, a freshman representative is. Like sort of the poster child behind a lot of this reform. I think it's important for people to remember that nothing goes through the House or the Senate without these two and their approval. So you know, at the end of the day, they're really the ones that are putting this putting this. In front of the General Assembly for consideration so. And just a reminder of who our local legislators are. If you're not familiar, we have four state senators and four state representatives that cover various parts of this. Area. I will say. Are all of our senators and representatives. Voted no for that legislation except for Brenner, Lorenz and Lear. They voted yes. On those legislat on those pieces of legislation to go to the governor's desk so. Senator Craig and Demora and Liston all voted no and has to pick Antonio and Abdallah. Just so everybody's aware. And this is our senators contact and our House of Representative members contact. And this presentation is available on board docs if anyone wants to go back and pull that down. Any question?
I don't have a question, but I would just encourage our community to reach out to Governor Dwyane. I'm curious. I can't remember when they hit his desk. Do they hit today? They didn't hit today. They hit last week, right?
Well, one twenty four, I think, has been on his desk. It would have been last week because it would have. They voted it out on, I think, the nineteenth or the twentieth.
So we don't have a lot of time. So they would need to call as soon as possible.
I think it's. You know, they're not blasting the Ohio Channel out on cable TV or anything, but. Like if anyone takes time to go and listen to some of these committee hearings and some of the stuff like, I mean, I, you know. Hear Senator Sandra O'Brien, who's up out of the Ash tribula area, former county auditor. She is chairing the local. Or the Senate Local Government Oversight Committee. Literally yell at people over these windfalls that schools have gotten and how they've made record investments in the school funding model and all of these things in committee and. It's just, it's disappointing to hear. Lawmakers like one act like that in committee when people are trying to share how this is going to impact them. But also, it's just not true. Like there's. We're gonna have a lot of unintended consequences, I know from this. But if you listen to Mike Sobel's hearing about just how unbelievably complicated this is gonna make things and. Like just completely shift how all of these things work and. Completely eliminate any uniformity we have in our property tax system across the state. I think it's not gonna help our. Cause with wanting to keep the ballot issue at bay. I mean.
Yeah, so it says to me too, though, that that's wasteful spending, right? We're we're complicating something even more where now we'll have to be spending more to actually. Work through that and understand it. Not us, but our taxpayer dollars will be going towards this.
To have to work through it and. I can't even think of the manpower that our counties are gonna have to invest in to be able to make any of this a reality and what that looks like and all of the legal fees. Our attorneys, like not our attorneys, but attorneys across the state are probably gonna have plenty of business with all of this. And you know, while they're doing this, I mean, these are like five bills that are on the governor's desk right now. There's lots of other things moving forward that would add all kinds of new requirements to public schools specifically. And it's just. It's unbelievable some days when you see what they're pushing through so.
Well, thank you. This I imagine will continue to have updates. Really appreciate that information, Ms. Marshall. If there's no other questions or comments. We have no public comments this evening, so we're gonna move along to the board meeting minutes. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five? Second, any questions or changes needed? All right, will you please take the vote?
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
abstain. I was sick.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. I'm moving along to financials, seven point zero one. May I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for October twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you please talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you again. I have a report here somewhere. So we are going over month end, October, twenty twenty five. So for our general fund, we had year to date receipts of ninety five point five million, year to date expenditures of seventy seven point four million. For all funds. Oh, I'm sorry. And we had an unencumbered fund balance of a hundred and twenty four point nine million for the general fund. For all funds, we had year to date receipts of a hundred and twenty one point seven million, year to date expenditures of a hundred and five point eight million. An unencumbered fund balance for all funds at two hundred and twenty point four million. And that is all I have for you.
Any questions? Will you take the vote?
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And moving along to seven point zero two, may I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio revised code? Fifty seven zero five point four one D one and Board Policy sixty three twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to the to us about these purchases?
Yes, thank you again. So these are what we call then and now purchase orders. And what this means is that we had invoices that are dated prior to a purchase order being opened. A purchase order date. And so we do have several on this. Agenda. The first one for Westerville South High School's Theater Department. I just want to make sure I have the right list here. Yeah, so Westerville South's Theater Department. For vocal director for one of their shows. The that was just a matter of timing. They didn't have the purchase order opened in time. That was budgeted for, however. Food service had. Some equipment upgrades. Again, that was a communication issue with getting the purchase order opened on time. And then transportation had van fuel and bus fuel. And there was a purchase order opened, but the vendor changed ownership, which caused them to have to create a new vendor profile, open a new PO. So it's really just a formality that that's being approved as well. And then the North Athletics, the lacrosse's score table. And there the boosters are re reimbursing for this purchase and so. They didn't have the check in time to be able to open the purchase order. There was a little bit of communication with that as well. Special education, Medicaid billing services. This. Also, we had a change in vendors, the ownership of the vendors, which required an updated W nine, so we had to open a new purchase order. There was a purchase order open. And then a utility bill for AEP from the Treasurer's Office. We had a PO that was closed in error, so in order to reopen that, we'll have to have the board's approval to pay that.
Any questions? Or comments? Okay, will you take the vote?
Mr. Ackelman? Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And moving along to seven point zero three, may I have a motion to authorize? For the authorization to reissue a state stale dated check.
So moved.
Second.
Will you talk to us about this too? Yeah. So we have, under Ohio law, any stale dated checks. With after five years, they get removed from our outstanding checklist and essentially those funds go into the general fund. We had a former employer employee that discovered an old payroll check that had not been cashed. We verified with our records that this check had not been cashed. And since it is outside of the five years, in order for me to reissue that check to them, I would need the board's approval to do that. I do recommend that we do that. That was money that she was taxed on and, you know, we did pay out. We just didn't have it cashed at the time, so.
Was this really from nineteen ninety nine?
Yes. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Any questions or comments? All right, will you take the vote?
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And can we take personal consent as one? Okay, great. May I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda eight point zero one through eight point eleven?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you and good evening. I'd like to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. Along with the regular action items in tonight's agenda, there are a few night items to be noted. Resignations, we have seven classified and three licensed resignations for the board to consider this evening, as well as one. Contract supplemental contract resignation. Leave of absences and contract status changes. We have three classified and two licensed LOAs. Or leave of absences to approve this evening. Of the five, four of those LOAs are extensions to leaves previously. Approved by the board. We have a fairly consistent number of classified contract status changes with eleven scheduled adjustments to approve this evening. We are eager to recommend the hire of six new classified employees. And one new intervention specialist and a home instruction tutor. The board will also see the large list of supplemental contract recommendations as we are finalizing our position for the winter sports season. And performance season, which is now upon us. And retirements, the board has one classified and fifteen licensed retirements to approve this evening. A lot of congratulations and we'll start with Francis Russ. Food service worker at Faust Elementary School for one year service to the district. Nancy Brobst, science teacher at Blenden Middle School, retiring with thirty two years of service to the district. Amy Ferris, educational media specialist at Central High School, twenty three years of service. Catherine Finnegan, intervention specialist at Genoa Middle School, thirty three years of service. Jennifer Gentile, grade two at Alcott Elementary School, thirty years of service. Carla Gilbert, science teacher at Genoa Middle School, thirty eight years of service. Gloria Kayler, second grade teacher at Alcott Elementary, twenty five years of service to the district. Pamela Malcolm, occupational therapist at Mark Twain Elementary School and Walnut Springs Middle School, twenty years of service. Kim Mason, EL teacher at Walnut Springs, seventeen years of service. Aileen Moran, reading specialist at Alcott, thirty seven years of service. Julie Panchif, speech language pathologist at McVeigh and Emerson, fifteen years of service to the district. Tanya Salisbury, reading specialist at Charrington Elementary School, twenty six years of service to the district. Sherry Stevenson, grade two Alcott, twenty five years of service. Teresa Vargo, intervention specialist at Walnut Springs, thirty four years of service. Gerald Yater at Heritage Middle School, social studies teacher, twenty nine years of service. And Jamie Yater, mathematics at Genoa Middle School, thirty one years of service. All told. These sixteen dedicated educators served Westerville City Schools. For four hundred and sixteen amazing years and from the end of the school year in twenty twenty six. The collective service of our retirees would take us back to the year sixteen ten. Where we had to dig deep. Galileo discovered the first four moons of Jupiter. Crowds gathered to the Globe Theater to watch the first blockbuster performance of Shakespeare's Macbeth. The Spanish founded the city La Via Real de la Santa Fe de San Francisco de Assis. What we know today as Santa Fe, New Mexico. Eight year old Louis the thirteenth became king of France after the assassination of his father Henri the fourth. His legacy today is the cognac that bears his name. Louis Treze sells for ten thousand dollars or more per bottle. And in sixteen ten, English navigator Henry Hudson made his fourth and final voyage. Trying to find a passage to the Pacific through the Arctic. His freezing crew wanted to go home, so they mutinyed, stuck Henry and a few loyal sailors in a rowboat. In what is now Henry Hudson Bay and sailed back without him. The frozen Henry Hudson and his rowboat crew were never heard from again. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Very morbid at the end. Any, any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you for that history lesson. Will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee Ban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. We have no old business, so next up we have new business. And ten point zero one, the first reading of policy twenty two sixty six. Non discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Mr. Reeves, you don't have to go very far.
No, not very far at all. Thank you. First reading, as you indicated, of policy twenty two sixty six, non discrimination. On the basis of sex in education programs or activities. The revision to this policy is necessary because on June twenty third, twenty twenty five, the National Incident Based Reporting System. Redefine the definition of fondling and change that. The term is now officially criminal sexual contact. And so we had to change that and we, the replacement of the term fondling with criminal sexual contact. In the current policy is necessary to make that alignment to the reporting system, which defines that term in. Very detailed in graphic that you can read. uh, very detailed in graphic that you can read in the draft. Uh, that definition includes instances where the victim is incapable of giving consent because of age, incapacity due to temporary or permanent mental or physical impairment or intoxication for the purposes of sexual gratification, degradation, and humiliation. We also make updates to our Title IX reporting email, uh, which we've simplified. Updates to several different terms and processes in the Title IX investigation procedure. So even though it's a very long policy, uh, the big change is the definition and just some other minor, uh, grammatical changes.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to the next one that's on your list too, huh? Ten point zero two, the first reading of policy eighty-four sixty-two, student abuse and neglect.
Yes, thank you. For this policy, in the last biennium budget in twenty twenty-three, schools were tasked with pro- with, with providing training in child sex abuse to certain designated staff, including nurses, teachers, administrators, counselors, school psychologists, and mental health providers. The law further specified that the training must be provided by either a law enforcement officer or prosecutor who has experience handling cases involving sex abuse and child sexual violence. In this biennium budget, House Bill ninety-six modified the law to strike the requirement that the training be provided by law enforcement or prosecutors. It also modified the requirement that the Department of Education and workforce develop a model curriculum for the training. School districts are now tasked with developing their own curriculum for youth suicide prevention and child sexual violence in consultation with public or private agency, agencies, or persons involved in those areas. And this bill incorporates that. So when we look at our staff training, we do that through our public school works, which all of our staff go on and do annually. For students, we fight, uh, we use fightchildabuse.org in K six. At the secondary level, we do that training through our health classes. And for suicide prevention, um, grade six through twelve, we use, we use the Sandy Hook programs. And all of those are resources that have been provided by the Department of Education and workforce.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for, sorry, seeing none?
Thank you. Oh, I just had one question, um, just very specific, but obviously the training, uh, professional training, um, period that's outlined, the five years, two years, obviously that would change as needed. Um, so if we feel that there's an opportunity to do more training, um, as a district, we would obviously offer, offer that to the professionals.
Yes, when they put that thankfully back in our hands, uh, the, the local professionals, we have the flexibility to make those changes as we see fit and needed.
Thank you. All right. Moving along to ten point zero three, the first reading of policy fifty-one thirty, withdraw from school. Welcome, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening. The proposed updates to policy fifty-one thirty apply standardized language to more clearly define the responsibilities of the superintendent or designee regarding required notifications and compliance procedures. And additionally, the policy's been updated to reflect current Ohio law, which now requires the district to notify only the juvenile court when a student under the age of eighteen withdraws without securing enrollment in approved school or program. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next up we have ten point zero four, the first reading of policy eighty-four hundred, school safety. Welcome, Mr. McElroy.
Good evening. Tonight you have revisions to policy eighty-four hundred, school safety before you. Policy eighty-four hundred has been revised to reflect the recent verbiage and procedures based on state law. Um, a few key revisions to the policy are as follows. One, in response to the state's cell phone requirement effective January twenty twenty-six, the district's emergency management plan for each school will include a, a protocol that addresses student use of cellular telephones during an active threat or emergency. And secondly, in response to R C thirty-three thirteen dot sixty-six-ten, the district has registered with the Safer Ohio School Tip Line, also known as the Anonymous Tip Line, which is operated by the Ohio, uh, School Safety Center. And this includes the nine-eight-eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. The number is one-eight-four-four-seven-two-three-thirty-seven-sixty-three, which is also eight-four-four-Safer-O-H. I'm open to any questions?
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you so much. All right, moving along to recommended action standing business. Eleven point zero one, another really awesome part of the night is donations. May I have a motion to approve the donations as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about these donations?
Yes, and, um, thank you to our generous community. Uh, so we, uh, for this current request value is seventy-three thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, which brings our current fiscal year-to-date total up to a hundred and seventy-six, three seventy-eight, and fifty-four cents. Um, lots of very generous donations. We do have a couple of anonymous donors, um, on there just for the board to note. And we're just very fortunate to have a very supportive community overall.
Just, uh, I'll just say a very huge thank you. This is really great. Are there any questions of, come? Okay. Will you take the vote?
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Liban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And moving along to eleven point zero two, may I have a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Tara Trigg to the Westerville Public Library Board of Trustees to begin January first, twenty twenty-six and expire December thirty-first, twenty thirty-nine?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you also talk to us about why we have to approve this? For the public, so.
That is a great question. So, um, this is just part of Ohio law. We are the taxing jurisdiction for the Westerville Public Library. That just means their boundaries are our boundaries. Um, they, uh, we approve, we appoint all of their trustee members. We also, um, have to approve any legislation for them to be on the ballot for tax issues or anything like that. So it's just how they're, um, created in Ohio law. So the Board of Trustees did meet, um, at the end of October, October twenty-eighth. Um, and they have Mrs. Trigg up for, uh, recommendation for the board's approval. And her resume is also attached in the, um, agenda if you're interested.
Any questions or comments? All right, all right. Uh, will you take the vote?
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Liban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. Moving along to eleven point zero three, may I have a motion to approve the E F Tours Agreement?
So moved. Second.
Welcome, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening. Scott Reeves and I have completed the full review of our partnership with E F Tours as part of a larger review of all board-approved travel for, for our students. While the international trip experiences related to E F Tours are typically scheduled to occur over the summer and other non-instructional periods of time, district staff members, district staff members often lead the trips for students from our district. As such, we wanted to ensure appropriate protections are in place for our staff in the district while maintaining the amazing experiences for our students, families, and staff who choose to travel. The agreement before you tonight has been thoroughly reviewed by the district's legal counsel, and it is recommended for your approval this evening. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
E F Tours is not new to the district, correct? We've been using them for some time.
Uh, does E F Tours do agreements on a district-by-district basis? Or I just happened to notice this is sort of on their letterhead and was curious how, what our part in the drafting, uh, of this was.
Yes, so they, they do actually, um, have district-by-district, uh, dependent on various states. Um, and so this one's specific to us. We did work through this, multiple meetings that we've had with them, virtual and in-person, as well as working with our legal, uh, council to ensure that we have language that specifically ties to Westerville City Schools and, and our needs.
Okay. Will you take the vote?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Liban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And next up we have board comments. Um, and if it's okay, I'd love to start us. Okay. Um, so I'll hold off on all the other legislative stuff that I was looking at and just, it was really doom and gloom. But I really wanted just to begin by offering my heartfelt gratitude to the Westerville community. I want to thank you for your support, for your confidence in our school district, and for re-electing me to serve on this board. It is an incredible honor to continue to work in this place where I grew up, where my husband and I choose to raise our family, where a majority of my nieces and nephews attend, and more than fourteen thousand five hundred children are learning and thriving every day. I also want to thank our voters for passing the school ballot measure. Your support is an investment in our students, their future, and in our community. I take that trust seriously. As a board member, I remain committed to being a fiscally responsible steward of every dollar and to ensuring that every decision centers the needs of students because they are the heart of our work and the reason we are all here. I want to thank the countless volunteers that worked on the campaign, as already mentioned, and Emma and Nelson and Kevin Hoffman for chairing the committee. They spent countless hours pounding the streets, answering questions on social media, putting together events, and so much more. Together, we will continue protecting opportunities, strengthening our schools, and ensuring that all Westerville students have what they need to succeed. Thank you for believing in our kids, for believing in us, and investing in this community and reach out anytime. I'm always happy to chat or meet. Um, I also want to congratulate my colleague Anisa Liban and Ms. Tatiana Brown on their successful election. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I agree with all of that that Christy shared. I definitely want to congratulate, um, and thank that community. I want to congratulate our A-plus awardees, um, who were recognized today, but also our retirees who, for their many years of contribution to the district. Um, also a personal thank you to our district families and voters for their support, um, of the Earn Income Tax ballot measure. I mean, that really took a lot of collaboration and, uh, being on the campaign trail, I think more than anything, it was important to hear, um, and really disconnect with community members to hear what's working, what's not working. And so I look forward to continuing those conversations over the next four years. Um, and I'm happy to be able to keep my seat, but more importantly, I want to ensure that, um, all of the families in our district, um, have a voice, um, at the table. And so I'm proud to be a part of this amazing district. And of course, happy Thanksgiving, but also happy Hanukkah to families who are observing that ahead, um, before we return on the fifteenth. Happy holidays.
Okay, well, um, first of all, congratulations, our A-plus award winners. I think, you know, I, I love the A-plus awards because we read the nominations and we get to hear from people who interact with these amazing educators every day. And that's, that's what we're here for. I mean, in many ways, that's what this ballot issue is about, is just allowing people to do the amazing job that they're doing and giving them the support that they need to do it. So thanks to them and thanks to the community for seeing the importance of that work for our young people and supporting it, um, so strongly. And congratulations to my colleagues and Ms. Brown, who will be joining us soon. Um, and you know, I just want to encourage people. I know I realize that not everyone supported the ballot issue and people have their reasons for supporting or not supporting, but I just really encourage everybody in this community to take part in something in our schools. Go see a play, an athletic event, music performance. Um, if you have the opportunity to volunteer in a classroom or just, it belongs to all of us. And I just really hope that everybody will take the opportunity to understand how much our schools and these incredible young people and the educators who shape them every day, how much they impact all of our lives. Whether you have children or grandchildren in school or not, our schools impact every one of us. So please take the opportunity. Um, we have some amazing young people who do just wonderful things. And, um, I just invite you in to see what they're doing and what their teachers are doing. And, um, you'll be amazed. So, thank you.
I echo all of the congratulations from everybody already, the A-plus award winners, um, all of the retirees. Man, that is a lot of years of service and for some of those, my kids have personally had those teachers. And I cannot believe, based on looking at them, that they're ready for retirement, so still looking good. Um, congratulations again to Christy Anisa for being, uh, able to continue to serve on this board. And to Tatiana, we're excited to welcome you onto the board as well. Um, again, as my colleagues have stated, a very genuine thanks to the community voting in support of, um, the new income tax to help us continue to deliver the quality of services that parents and students need and expect in this district and for being able to provide teachers and staff with the resources that they need to be able to deliver those things. I'm very, very grateful for that. Um, and hopefully, hopefully we won't have to talk so much about the finances maybe for the next year or two. Nicole's looking over there like now we're still going to. It, maybe it'll feel a little less urgent, uh, for the next year or two. Um, and yes, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, happy Hanukkah. Um, yeah, we'll see everybody next month.
Uh, I mean, I can't say that hasn't already been said, especially congratulations to my colleagues and to Tatiana, uh, for joining us, uh, shortly. Um, I guess what I wanted to sort of, uh, off the cuff, say thank you for is thank you to the teachers in the district who, in the midst of this distress of an issue that was very, very serious, came in every day, carried out their job, did it with excellence as we saw tonight. Uh, I mean, that's just an impossible position, like, because it's been coming since July and you had to start the school year under those stresses. And still, our kids had to show up every day and feel loved and supported and feel like they're in a safe environment. And so kudos to you and especially administration-wise additionally for all the support in walking that very fine line between not being able to support but making sure our community got the facts. Uh, I know I greatly appreciated it as someone kind of sitting on the edge of all this and admiring that i- it was followed to the letter. Uh, and that's a very, very difficult thing to do when you're so invested personally in the outcome. So, uh, thank you to them. Thank you. Congratulations to our retirees. I was really struck by our A-plus crew tonight as I saw magnet schools and art teachers and counselors and all these things that we were sort of in our heads worried about, huh, you know, a, a month ago. Now just being empowered, uh, to go on and do the great work that they do. So, thank you so much.
Very well said. Um, so the board will meet in regular session on Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M at the Early Learning Center, which is here, nine-three-six Eastwind Drive, Westerville, Ohio, four-three-zero-eight-one. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Ackelman?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Liban?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.